Please rise, uh, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Heimler, here. Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Hohenchild?
Here.
Mrs. Ian?
Here.
Mr. Rightnower?
Here.
Mr. She?
Here.
Mr. Slavich?
Here.
Mrs. Wallleider?
Yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
I'm present.
Moving on to recognitions, Mr. Poddinger. So the first item we'd like to discuss this evening is an obituary minute. Uh, Mr. Barry Quillman was one of our custodians that had been with us for several years. Uh, and when a member of the school district passes away, we create something called the obituary minute. So if you don't mind me for it, I'll take a moment to read this. Whereas the board of directors of Brandywine Heights Area School District acknowledges the passing of the dear friend in education, Mr. Barry Quillman, on May 1st, 2022. Whereas Barry Quillman served the district with dedication and excellence at the high school custodian for a total of 11 years before retiring in 2018. Uh, whereas Barry Quillman is committed to lifelong learning devotion to students and record of excellence in educational and community endeavors will long be remembered and appreciated. Whereas his passing is marked by a deep sense of loss to his family and friends in the district. And whereas Brandywine Heights Area School District would like to publicly recognize the extraordinary life and record of service of Barry Quillman, now therefore be resolved that the school board of the Brandywine Heights Area School District officially honor Mr. Barry Quillman for his role in improving the lives of countless students and citizens through his contributions in education, public services, family, and the community. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of the school district this 13th day of June 2022, with a copy to be sent to his briefing. Thank you. Um, so moving on to a little bit of a happier news, we have two New Heights Award recipients that we're going to be recognizing this evening. Uh, so just to kind of brief everyone, New Heights Award is, it's a, an opportunity for staff to be recognized. We do this on a monthly basis. Uh, staff, students, community members can recognize staff members. Uh, and in that process of recognizing them, uh, it gives, uh, the opportunity to then select two people that become essentially employees of the month. Uh, and so we have two individuals we'd like to recognize this evening. Uh, the first one is Miss Olivia Lambert. So let me just take a moment and, uh, read a little bit, uh, of why Olivia was nominated. Does Olivia organize and led along with the Health and People Services Department the mindfulness family night that occurred on May 11? She should be recognized for putting together an amazing event for parents and children. Olivia was able to organize with around 20 community agencies, businesses, set up emotional wellness booths, and this year having a mindfulness yoga meditation session set up. Worthy in an event of this magnitude is an even more impressive as her first year as a school psychologist. As a vital member of the People Services Department who has shown exceptional skills beyond more experienced school psychologists, she is certainly worthy of the New Heights Award. So we, we will certainly make sure that Olivia gets this recognition, uh, and she, uh, definitely is, uh, recognizing that award. She is new to the school district. As mentioned, she is a first-year school psychologist with us and really has a wonderful personality for the world. Uh, second, we'd like to re- recognize Erica, and I saw Erica is here. So Erica, and Mr. Genich. So Erica joined, is it three years now?
This is, that was my second year.
That was your second. You're going into the third.
Yeah.
Uh, she, she is one of our science teachers in the high school. She has made phenomenal connections with students. Uh, there are three awards or recognitions for Erica, so if you don't mind bearing with me. Um, and it's neat because all three of them come from different, uh, sources. Some students, some parents, some faculty. I'd like to nominate Miss Slavich for the New Heights Award because she has gone above and beyond to prepare me for college chemistry. After chemistry two with Mrs. Slavich, last year I felt confident in my chemistry skills, which have paid off in Penn State chemistry class last year as part of the medical health professionals program. To further my chemistry knowledge, Mrs. Slavich agreed to start the chemistry and education internship where I learned organic chemistry and assisted with chemistry one and two labs. I appreciate her prepping those, these special lessons just for me. Mrs. Slavich has a major influence on my career, and I want to thank her with this award. Second, I want to echo my daughter's nomination for Mrs. Erica Slavich for the new, may New Heights Award. Lauren has always been a great student but had never found a teacher to push and inspire her. Mrs. Slavich has done that just for Lauren. Mrs. Slavich has consistently pushed Lauren to be a better student, has built her academic competence level, has been a constant quiet source of encouragement. Lauren is part of the Penn State Chemistry student because of Mrs. Slavich. As a teacher working alongside of her, I am in awe of her dedication, classroom management, and the classroom reader. She is one of the first teachers in the building every morning, is always willing to share lab ideas, chemicals, and lab equipment. She is also one of the most sincere, friendly, and hardworking teachers in the high school building. earning the New Heights Award is the type of recognition she deserves. And finally, uh, Mrs. Slavich is one of the kindest, most flexible, and patient teachers I've ever met. Every day I come to the class, she has a smile on her face. She works so incredibly hard to make fun, interactive chemistry labs and review games. She even created a murder mystery and escape room connected to the topics we learned in chemistry to conclude the year. Mrs. Slavich goes out of her way to support her students by attending music hall school plays and sport events. She asked about our days and, our days and how we are doing. She recognizes when, uh, when we need a break break and that of a long day, we play a game for the last 10 minutes of the class. I want Mrs. Slavich to know how much her students appreciate her. I know him by far not the only one. And they keep going on. She is one of the, another student. She is, she is the best. She is always so sweet and caring but does not let people push her around. She is inclusive of all learning styles, which has helped me tremendously because most teachers don't. She made me love chemistry, and I never thought I'd enjoy that class so much. Another one, she's a great teacher and very helpful while also incorporating fun, school-related activities. Another student. Best teacher, most helpful, and understanding. Another student. She's great. Another student. Cares about her students. Obviously, very, very well deserved. Uh, so I'm, I'm going to echo the students. I mean, there's actually some students that came here to, just to support Mrs. Slavich, the connections that she has managed to establish with her classes have been. Honestly, so neat to see. It is a fun room to be in. I spent a lot of time in there, uh, usually so that I can learn something too. Uh, she teaches challenging science, uh, to students, and they understand it, and they respond really well to her. And she's just been such a positive, uh, voice in the department, and to have her along with me for these two years, which have been the most interesting of two years that you can have, starting out in an educational career, but to see what she has done with our students in the building has been phenomenal. Love working with her and seeing what she does with this. Next up this evening, we have a couple, uh, recognitions we'd like to make with, in the athletic department. So I will call on Mr. Geis to, uh, coordinate those, uh, recognitions.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Uh, can I ask the, uh, track athletes that are here tonight to, to come up here and join us? And the parents, too. Okay, the parents can come up, too. Don't, don't run at us. It is an honor and privilege, uh, tonight that we recognize some of our, our special track and field athletes, uh, that did a tremendous job, uh, this year. We may have a, a small team in comparison to some of the other teams we, we compete against, but, but we are mighty. Uh, we had almost half of our track athletes make it to, uh, qualify for district competitions this year, which is a, which is a great accomplishment for, for our, our small team. And we were led by, uh, a number of our, our individuals that did an outstanding job all year preparing and, and getting ready for, for competition. I'm proud to announce tonight that we had, uh, two gold medals at district competitions this year. If you guys don't know much about District Three, District Three is a huge district with a lot of schools. So what they did is a, is a huge accomplishment. Um, first off, our four by 400 District Three 2A champion team represented here by Adam Peterson and Joshua Sterner, who are present tonight, Dakota Thomas, who's also part of that team, he wasn't able to make it here tonight, and Tyler McCollough, and his parents are sitting back there, he could make it here tonight, too. Probably on some senior trip, right? But, uh, I think these guys kind of came out of nowhere to really take that gold. Uh, as the year went on, like I said, we were this small little team here at Brandywine Heights, but as the season went on, uh, other teams, other coaches, uh, recognized the talent that we had as part of our track team. And I, I congratulate that four by four, uh, 100 team for, for winning the gold. That's a big accomplishment. Um, I also want to give a special recognition to Joshua Sterner, who also medaled in the, in the 400 meter at states as, as well. So congratulations to you for getting that medal. And, uh, also, uh, Adam, uh, first year running track, right? Gold medal winner in the 100 meters. So, uh, in District Three 2A. So another outstanding accomplishment. I'm very proud of their, their accomplishments and how they represented Brandywine Heights at our district competitions. And I know you guys, uh, Tyler, of course, we congratulate him not only by getting a gold medal but also graduating. Um, but, uh, all the rest of the team, uh, uh, we're looking for good things in the future because everybody else is coming back next year. So congratulations on a great accomplishment. And I also want to thank Shay D. because I know we got off and, and we had some, uh, rock, we had a rocky start, and we, we had some controversy throughout the year, but I want to thank Shay D. for taking over as, as coach, and Amanda Potico for taking over as coach to help these guys and get them ready for competition. And I'll let you, if you have anything else you want to add.
Um, I just want to say, um, I'm very proud of you guys for getting so far in, uh, the track season this year, making it safe as a small school. As Mr. Rais said, is a very great accomplishment, and I'm proud of you guys.
All right, let's give him a hand. Thank you, guys. Uh, switching gears here, I also would like to call up right now is Coach Don Roach. If you could come up here, please. This is an honor and privilege for me to, uh, tonight to recognize you, Coach, uh, for all your, your accomplishments. Um, and in particular, uh, Coach Roach, uh, reached a, an important milestone in his career, his 400th victory. Um, it's a great accomplishment. And when you really look at the list of accomplishments, his, this softball team that you provide leadership to every year has reached unprecedented success under, under your leadership. 15 division championships, six county championships when we're going against schools twice our size, 10 district championships, and making it to five PIA championship games and also achieving a state championship. Those type of accomplishments do not happen by accident. It takes strong leadership, and that's what you provide every day. I tell our other coaches and I tell when we were at the sports banquet, it's a true pleasure and honor to see you go to work every day with these girls and what you do on a daily basis. It's really something to see. You have a lot of attributes that are critical for the coaching. Number one in my book is you're a master teacher. I see how you teach these girls and prepare them each and every day. There's one thing as an athletic director, when they go to a competition, I know these girls are prepared and ready for competition. But also, it's the culture that you provide with these girls. Um, your team mottos every year. It's funny because sometimes I will say a phrase or something, and it resembles a, one of their models for the last 20 years, and all in unison, I hear the girls will yell back at me, "Bolts!" So I know it was something that, that, that you instilled to them over this time. Um, but it's a great culture, and I know you're proud of all these accomplishments, but I know that's not why you coach. Because the leadership you provide is you are changing lives every day, and you're changing lives in a positive way. And one of the other things is, that you do is you build relationships with, with these girls that will last a lifetime. That's why our coaches coach. I know that's why you, you coach. Um, I get emotional talking about this because one of my favorite things this year was when you got your 400th victory. And we have it on videotape, and it actually illustrates why you coach. And after he was presented with the game ball, he put his arms out like this, and the whole team came and gave you a hug. And what they said to you in that hug in unison was, "We love you, Coach." That's what it's all about. And that's why you're so successful. And I can't thank you enough. You've set the standard here at Brandywine Heights for coaches, and, uh, can't thank you enough for all you do on behalf of our, our student athletes.
Mr. Roach, huge congratulations. Students, awesome job, guys. You did a phenomenal job. What, what'd you tell me? What did you tell me when, when I saw you afterwards? Don't worry, we got it next year, right?
Oh, yeah.
Huge congratulations, guys. That's awesome. What an amazing feat you accomplished. I'm really proud of you guys.
I also wanted to say, I know Coach, Coach knows he can't do it alone. I want to also thank, uh, Coach Rick Fegley, his assistant coach is right here. He's also another awesome coach here at Brandywine Heights. Thank you, Rick, for what you did. Yeah, stand up.
Uh, so we have two, a couple other things we'd like to, uh, just share with the board before we get to the official meeting, uh, this evening. Um, we were very fortunate to receive a very generous donation from Air Products. Air Products is transitioning to a new facility, uh, and so a lot of their office furniture was, uh, up for donation, and they were able to donate a lot of that. So we have, uh, new office chairs for the staff, uh, some new, uh, small group learning tables like these that we're going to be using for our students. So, so really neat opportunities for us to, uh, capitalize that and update some of our furniture through Air Products. Uh, secondly, I'd like to, uh, recognize that, uh, we started the process of something called the Bullet Points Newsletter. Uh, the summer, spring, summer edition was just released, and so, uh, I would just like to call the board's attention that. In there, there's a very nice piece about our graduates, uh, and recognizing their wonderful accomplishments as we wish them, uh, well into their next, uh, endeavors in life. Finally, I'll turn it over to Mr. Volker. Uh, this evening, we want to take a few minutes and recap and talk about some of the initiatives that we've been working on as a school district pertaining to academics. So obviously, that has been a, uh, a concern. It's been a talking point for the school district, uh, and we continue to focus on that. Uh, and so as a recap, as the last board meeting before we enter into the, uh, the summer recess, if you will, uh, we thought it'd be a good opportunity to, to talk about, uh, the, the academic programs that are in place, some of the things that we put in place to support our students, to make change. Uh, and, and I know people higher hearing this, but it's unfortunately true. Sometimes it takes time to see those change agents come into effect. Uh, there are a lot of initiatives at play right now, all working towards improving the academic program in the school district. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Volker to, uh, go through this, uh, pretty interactive, uh, PowerPoint here.
Sounds good. And I do want to apologize. I did shower. I knew people were going to leave, but that's my fault. So, um, uh, good evening, everybody. I think as, as a school board, um, the administrative team often will come to you and say, "Hey, we're going to work on this. We're going to work on Act 13, and we're going to, uh, move forward with, uh, frontline to manage specific teacher evaluations." And what you're getting is you're getting specific components, different snippets of everything that's really required to make sure that we drive a quality, successful academic program forward. Um, both as Mr. Poddinger and I were talking, we thought it's a really good time now just to come back to the board and make sure we all, all understand how these different pieces of the puzzle fit together. Because you can't just have one. It's not good enough just to have quality curriculum if you don't have quality instruction. And if you don't, i- if you have quality instruction but you don't have quality assessments to figure out what the students are learning, then you might be teaching the wrong things. So all of these different components go together, and that's really what I want to, uh, try to illustrate today. So you can see all of those different unique snippets that we've been working on, how that all fits together to the bigger picture. So what I have up here is, these are the components that an educational institution such as ourself needs to have in place for a quality educational program. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start going kind of one by one through this. So to start, we need to start with curriculum, and that's honestly where we started years ago. Our curriculum has been robust, and it continues to be. We have 271 unique courses across the entire school district, and every single one of those courses has its own unique curriculum that's been designed for it. Not only do we have that curriculum, but we can guarantee that it is aligned to the academic standards as they need to be. And not only, uh, do we have those documents, but years ago, we said, "These documents shouldn't be just something that sits on my shelf and I'm the only one that refers to. It should be a public document so parents in the community can see, okay, well, what does fifth grade math look like? What are they going to be covering? What's the timeline? What components? What resources?" It's all there. It's all publicly facing. And, uh, I think it was about two years ago, uh, there was the start of conversation about legislation, about school districts now are going to be mandated, which the, the legislation died, but it was, it was talk about, uh, school districts being mandated to make their curriculum forward-facing. We're years ahead of that. We're, we're in a very good place in terms of curriculum, so I'm not going to beat a dead horse, and I'm going to move on to the next part. Um, once you have that curriculum in place, that really drives what the teachers are doing instructionally. So we've had a lot of work over the last several years where we're focusing on instruction, instructional best practice. That didn't necessarily start with, okay, just what's going on in our district. We actually went out outside of Berks County, and we found schools that were either being successful with their overall achievement or their growth data that they were seeing. So we've gone through a number of different schools. We've done site visits, and one of the biggest takeaways that we found was schools that seemed to have a lot of success implemented a hybrid-type model of instruction, which is just a fancy term for basically small group instruction, where there's a station or a station of teachers who are working with small groups of students focused on the individual needs of those students. So after all of those conversations, we came back as a team and said, "Okay, well, one thing I think we can do to make sure we're even more successful is to really focus on those Keystone Trigger courses." And again, Keystone Trigger courses are just the courses that students take where at the end of it, they take a Keystone exam. So those are referred to as your Keystone Trigger courses. So all Keystone Trigger courses, um, at the high school are focused on implementing the hybrid model of instruction. So all of those courses. And we started there, and we continue to spread year after year. We have some hybrid instruction going on at the elementary, intermediate, middle, high school, and that continues to grow. And we've worked with more and more cohorts every year, shifting that instructional practice. We took a look at our course sequencing. Before, we did an algebra, geometry, algebra two. Um, after a lot of reflection and talking about how we can utilize algebra two to provide remediation for students that may need that after algebra one, we shifted to an algebra one, algebra two geometry sequence of courses. Uh, through this process, we also implemented a supervisor of instruction and assessment position to make sure that the instruction across the board, um, is where we need it to be. And that position focuses almost entirely on getting into the classrooms every single day and providing that ongoing embedded professional, professional development for all of our teachers, K through 12. And that's been very successful. Um, we've gone through and we actually clarified, what does quality instruction look like at the Brandywine Heights Area School District? And we put a whole pamphlet together about that, and we roll that out to our staff, and we make sure that we talk about that. And when we get into later about walkthroughs, we make sure that those components within what we say is important to be an educator within the Brandywine Heights Area School District, that's the feedback that we provide, and that's what we look for when we do our classroom walkthrough, our classroom walkthroughs and our, um, observations. It's all focused on those specific things, connected all back together because none of these things are silos. Um, we also thought it was extremely important to move forward with additional summer learning opportunities. So at first, it started with us just opening a lot of our curricular resources, but then we started increasing what we were doing, uh, with reading. And then we have, uh, Camp Invention, which started, uh, today, uh, in the building. So we brought that into the school. And then most recently, this is our second year that we're going to be running Camp Spark. So again, more and more summer learning opportunities, so we try to prevent that summer slide that happens. Um, it wasn't just us as a school district, again, operating independently. I thought it was extremely good, and the team agreed to bring in outside perspectives. So we partnered with the BCIU. Uh, they came in and they provided feedback, again, specifically in the area of math. We did this a lot to make sure that what are we missing? We know that we struggle academically in, in math instruction, uh, more on that secondary level. So we brought in the BCIU's go-to expert on math. We did classroom walkthroughs, classroom debriefs. We identified specific things specifically in the area of questioning and depth-of-knowledge questions that we, we, uh, worked on with our staff and with this individual from the BCIU. Um, professional development is always that biggest thing. I always say, if I can give a teacher one thing, I want to give them professional development. I can't give a tool that will do anything better. These laptops are fantastic, but nothing replaces the teacher in the classroom. So we want to make sure that they're teaching us at the highest level, and that's where we've really done a nice job personalizing that professional development. Not only did we personalize that PD to make sure it's tailored to the specific teacher's needs, but then we also added professional development time. We have extended Tuesdays. We added a day to the teacher's contract, Day 189, and that was all part of the contract negotiations, and all of that time is used for professional development. Um, again, as I was talking about classroom walkthroughs earlier, we provide, uh, at least one classroom walkthrough for every single teacher, every single quarter. So teachers are constantly getting that feedback from an administrator on what we think of the instruction. If there are follow-up questions, we follow up with those teachers. But again, it's that ongoing professional dialogue. And then, of course, we do have our formal observations that happen, uh, in partnership with the evaluation cycle, where there's the difference between the supervision plan, formal observation. Not to go through all the details of that, but that, that is a big part of it. And then we've also increased the rigor with which we provide our new teacher induction program. So now all new teachers actually go through, uh, conversation cycle with our supervisor of instruction and assessment. Uh, additionally, we're looking to increase the length of that induction program. Right now, it's a one-year induction program. Moving forward, we're looking to move forward with a two-year induction program. Again, we know that the most formative years for a teacher are the first three years. So we're looking to maximize the amount of support we provide to our teachers. So that's curriculum, that's instruction, and then we get to assessment. Um, as part of our strategic plan, we said we really want to make sure that we're utilizing that data to drive our instructional practices. We have a myriad of resources that we were using currently. CDT's, Imagine Math, IXL, FastBridge, and what we're looking to do to improve this practice, because it's even different right now for regular ed versus special education, um, assessments, we're looking to move forward with a, a more consistent universal screener that will give us the data that we need across the board. So we're looking to move forward. We're already using FastBridge for ELA. We're looking to move forward with FastBridge Math next year. Again, there's that consistency, and that same tool is able to be utilized within the special ed umbrella. And in a little bit, when I start talking about intervention, you'll see it all gets connected, and that all leads into, uh, potential special ed, uh, education identification supports. Um, so again, I just kind of alluded to that third bullet there. Um, a big part of having the data is, it's not just teachers' data then to have. We're making a conscious effort to make sure that it's a shared ownership and a shared responsibility with our students. So when we have that data, we're talking about one-on-one conferencing with our students. Hey, this is how you scored. What's your goal moving forward? So collaborative goal setting. And then what are you going to do as, as the student to help reach that goal? This is what I'm going to do as a teacher to help you on that path. But that collaborative goal setting to make sure that we're moving forward, graphing that data together, um, that's a big part of, of what we're looking to do. So then we have intervention. Um, moving forward, we, so everybody knows we have intervention in place. This last year, we've had more intervention in place than we've ever had before because of the S or dollars that were associated with that. And that's been fantastic. Uh, but as we have more staff members involved in the process, and we were evaluating that process, we realized, oh, you know, there are a couple of different areas where we could strengthen and bolster what it is that we're doing in terms of practice. So what we're doing from kindergarten all the way through the high school has a similar look and feel. Um, so again, we do understand that students learn at different rates at different times. There's nothing wrong with that. That is completely normal. But making sure that we have more supports in place for those students that are struggling academically is really where we wanted to bolster our work. So we've done a lot of research and So we've done a lot of research investigating different resources that we want to implement to make sure that we close those academic gaps as quickly as possible. And we just have a traditional, you have a three-tiered model. Tier one, what happens at the lowest level of support are things that the regular ed teacher can do within their classroom. And then if that student needs additional support beyond that, that's where it goes into a tier-two level of support, where there's an interventionist that's providing support. And then you go up to tier three, where it's intensive additional supplemental instruction that the core teacher and the interventionists are doing. And typically, what you'll see in a three-tier model is at one of those levels, students start improving and then you bring them back down. However, there are going to be situations where tier one, tier two, and tier three aren't successful. At that point, we have all the data, so there's not a massive delay for potential identification to receive special education services. And that process will be seamless moving forward. So that's something that we're very excited about. And again, you heard me talk about academic support several times because our goal is to have this robust intervention plan ready to go for the start of school on the academic side of the house, so instructional support. But we are also currently in the process of developing behavioral and social emotional support for students too, that will go through a similar process, albeit it's going to be slightly different. But we want to make sure that students are supported, again, when we talk about the whole child. The next item we have here, time is always the biggest challenge. So we've done a lot of work looking at schedules. At the elementary schedule, nothing really is going to change in terms of length of day. However, we spent a lot of time taking a look at that schedule and we found that the way that it's currently set up, it's difficult for those interventionists and special education teachers to pull students without pulling out of core instruction. So you're stealing from the time you want to provide support in. So what we've done very collaboratively is devise a new schedule, similar to what we have in place now, but that actually has small group instruction time aligned across grade levels. So when I am that interventionist teacher or the special education teacher, I have a very specific time that I can provide supplemental instructional support for those students instead of pulling them out of a core class. So that's going to be very important. Really, just being honest, one of our biggest goals of looking at schedules was trying to find a way to get more instructional minutes to our high school students. It's no mystery that students will need help and support, K through twelve. That doesn't stop when they get to high school. And currently, the way that the schedule is built, they're using every single minute for their instructional time. There is no remediation built within the schedule as it stands now. And our instructional day was on the shorter end. So we investigated everything from one bus run to, you know, trying to shorten that time between our runs, which is pretty much what we have as far as our proposed schedule here. And what we have is we have the current schedules listed there. And for those that can't read that super fine font, what you'll see is the elementary and the intermediate, their schedules really aren't changing. They have, and we're proposing they continue, with seven hours of instructional time. The middle school and the high school, they're connected together because of the bus run. So taking a look at the high school schedule, we said, okay, instead of starting at seven thirty-four, which is a unique time to start, if we start at seven thirty and we extend it that instructional day to two thirty, which isn't too late, that's, it shouldn't impact with athletics and everything else that, you know, goes on within a student's life, we could actually get that instructional day to seven hours, which is consistent across the board then. And then similarly, with our middle school, we bumped that time up on either end slightly to get to that seven hours. So then across the board, K through twelve, we're talking about seven hours of instructional time. Mr. Potter, is there anything more you'd like me to state on that for now?
No, I can do that.
Okay, we'll come back to questions all at the end for anything you may have. And then the final piece is communication. So education doesn't work without that connection to home, right? Parents can do a lot, schools can do a lot independently, but it really works when everybody is working together. So we've spent a lot of time piloting at the elementary level, a skills-based report card this past year. And the reason for that really has to do with meaningful feedback to parents about how their children are actually doing. If I'm a parent and my child comes home with an eighty-seven percent on their report card, that doesn't tell me as a parent, what is it that I can do to better support my child? I see that they're doing okay, they're doing fine, but that really doesn't give me a lot of information outside of, you know, reaching out to the teacher and saying, okay, I need some things that I can do to help. This report card really drills down on all the skills that are needed for a student in that grade level. And it says, this is how they're doing. They're below grade level here, they're on grade level here, they're advanced here. And that, again, that helps me as a parent, better be able to support my student. That's what we've done K to three. We've done a lot of conversations this year talking about a district grading policy that supports our overall philosophy of education, moving forward grades four through twelve. So similarly to how we've had grades in the past, there still will be an eighty-seven percent because grades four through twelve are a little different relative to that. At the high school, there would be pages and pages and pages of skills for every course. It just doesn't make sense doing it that way. But we wanted a grading system that's more consistent and going to be driven more on academic mastery of skills than it is maybe on effort. So we've noticed that a lot of our students are scoring very well on their report cards. We have a lot of As and Bs on the report cards, but yet at the same time, we notice that those same students are struggling to pass the Keystone exam. So when we started digging into it, we started finding out that a lot of the grades, students were getting increased scores because they were going above and beyond doing extra credit work, which is fantastic. There's nothing wrong with that approach. But what we're saying is, you know, what's the purpose of the report card? Why are we communicating this information? Why are we communicating this information the way that we are? And it came back to, we need to make sure that our report card is truly more reflective of the child's ability than it is maybe more on the effort side. So what we're proposing is actually shifting to, instead of a point-based system, a weighted scale. So sixty percent of a student's overall, so an increased percentage of a student's overall report card grade is going to come from those summative assessments. And again, that could be a project, that could be a formal, traditional test, the way that we do it, but something that occurs at the end of a unit of study to identify what it is that students have mastered during that portion. And then forty percent is going to be that formative assessments, those smaller point assignments that go on throughout the quarter. Having this conversation, we said, oh, gosh, well, if we increase the importance of these summative assessments, what happens for those either students that are the traditional not-good test takers, or they just bomb a test, something happened? So we had a long conversation about that and we said, you know what? We believe in the growth model for our students. So if there's a student that didn't test great on day twenty-seven, I don't care if they didn't learn it on day twenty-seven. The goal is that they learn it, kind of outside of the time realm. So we're encouraging retesting and for all summative assessments, that is something that we're encouraging our students to do. Now, we still need them to take ownership and responsibility for their learning. So if they want to retest, there are certain things that they're going to have to prove to the teacher. And, you know, we have all of that detail. But again, the goal is, okay, you didn't learn it now, let's work on it, practice, improve. How are we doing here? And again, growth is what it's all about for us. We don't necessarily care about day twenty-seven mastering it. It's at the end of that unit of study, we want to make sure you know everything before you move on. So that's a consolidated, quick, brief, I'm not sure, way to share that there have been many things that we've discussed at the board level and many things that you have supported. And our goal of this presentation is make sure that you see how all of those pieces are fitting together to help drive that instructional piece forward, to help, I really should say, to help drive that student achievement piece and that student growth piece forward. I know now, we all want the PA standardized assessment grades to go up. And that is something that everybody is working on. I can tell you definitively that our students are taking these Keystone exams much more seriously than they ever have before. And the support is there from our teachers. That is tracking in a positive direction. But things like this don't just change overnight. So we don't have our PSAs scores, we don't have our finalized Keystone scores yet. I'm expecting to see improvement. But I don't expect to see a light switch turned off and on. It's going to take some time. And with all of these supports in place, we're headed in the right direction. I just want everybody to see everything that's going on. So should we get our scores back and one area might not be what we want it to be? Realize there is support in every single area. All of the components that need to be in place are in place and they're constantly being strengthened. And if there's any concern about any of that, please know, I'm happy to go way more in detail about anything you want to know here. But there's a lot of good things going on here. Our teachers are doing well, our students are doing well. It's just a matter of time until we see the data track in the positive direction. Questions?
Yes. The goal, we talked about what was the goal for tonight, is just to illustrate that inner workings of all the different initiatives and some reports that are in place to support that student growth and to support that student success. And that, I think, that's a very nice job, and Tom went through a whole lot of the things underneath each bullet point that are interconnected and everything. So again, the goal was, we talked in what I feel maybe silos of all the different things that are happening. Maybe we talk about instruction here, maybe we talk about assessment here, maybe we talk about a position here, but this was a way to capture all that support in a networkized fashion, so you can see if those are gonna work. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Potter, a couple of quick, oh, what question?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, Tom, don't go over there.
Okay.
Yeah. Excellent overview, by the way. It really helps to see all the integrated moving parts.
Thank you.
The teacher induction in particular.
Yes.
You said that you're extending it from one year to two. One of the things as a board member that we see all the time over all the years that I've been involved is a request for approval of mentor. So we have a new teacher matched with an existing experienced teacher. Is there like a job description for the mentor? I know they get compensated for that extra time. I'm sure there's some expectations set, but how structured a role is that? And how do you identify whether that's been a successful and productive match versus just an assignment, a connection?
Yes. So everything within the induction plan gets developed, set, and revised as part of Pennsylvania Department of Education's comprehensive plan. And new, coming out of recent legislation, Pennsylvania Department of Ed is actually the one that's going to be saying, your induction program must be at least two years. So they don't have the details on that yet, but they said, this is what we're going to be doing. In our induction program, we have a lot of details about what it takes to be a mentor, what qualifications you must have. And then we have a monthly, step-by-step, what it is that the mentor and the mentee and building principal and team all should be working on, should be focusing on and collaborating on. At the end of the induction program, there is actually a formal evaluation process that's done by everybody involved. But then obviously, we have ongoing monthly meetings where, I mean, the building principals are the ones that manage the monthly meetings. And as part of that, informally, not as formally as you may be thinking, but informally, we're constantly monitoring the process, or I should say, the success of that partnership between the mentor and the inductee. But formally, it gets evaluated at the end.
All right. Along those same lines, and certainly I know you've used a lot of committee structure to drive some of these enhancements and initiatives. Have we formally surveyed our hundred and forty or so teaching professionals to ask them, in addition to all of this, that you guys have been working so hard on, what else they need to be more successful in the classroom?
In terms of professional development, or are you thinking in terms of induction?
Broader, professional development, resources, time, you know, anything. What else you need? These are all the things we're doing. We think this is going to really help.
Yep.
What else can we do?
So what we do is, we do, as you mentioned, we have the professional development committee, which meets annually. And then typically, it's about every three years, we send out a formal survey, which asks exactly what you just said. Is there something else that you need? And we've done that a myriad of ways. We've listed, here are a bunch of different professional development topics. And we've also done it where just tell me, and we'll read through every single response that you have. We've done it both ways. This summer, we are looking to kick off our next phase of strategic comprehensive planning. Actually, every board member will be receiving an invite if you're interested in joining as part of that process shortly. And in that process, there is a professional development focus and there is also an induction focus. So both of those things are going to be really focused on this summer in terms of where we're headed for the next three-plus years again.
I might, just personal recommendation, encourage you to consider more frequent survey input than every third year. So again, I know the comprehensive planning and strategic planning process provides some of that input from select candidates who choose to participate or who get volunteered to participate, but that ongoing feedback, I think, might be powerful because it could just be one or two comments that ignite an idea that maybe we haven't considered. And it might be really productive that way.
Absolutely. I would just add on one last thing. One of the positives of being the size that we are as a school district
Yeah.
is we have a lot of those ongoing conversations with our teachers all the time. So whether it's the department head that we're talking about, small departments that we're meeting with, is there anything you need? When I talk about that personalized professional development, that's really where we are. So we're having those individual conversations with departments, with teachers individually, and they're telling us it's a two-way street. I do feel as a PD, we're in a very good place.
All right. My third comment or question really ties right into that, which is, if we were to ask you, like, if you had a silver bullet, if wave your wand, if financial constraints and time constraints and traditional constraints weren't real.
Yeah.
What would your silver bullet be? And I'm not sure we need to answer that right now.
I'd be happy to.
But the same question for every individual staff member, right? So again, as a board, and clearly we hear confidence coming from your leadership laying this all out, and now we just kind of have to sit back and wait for the results to pop.
Which is awful.
Which, yeah, doesn't
Oh, I want to throw up. Yeah, absolutely.
I know you struggle a couple of times.
I'm very confident we're doing the right things. But don't get me wrong, like you, I want to move the clock forward. Like, let's see how we did, let's see how we did. And it's really hard being in this situation where, you know, we meet with our teachers, we look at the instruction that they're providing in the classroom, we're reviewing the data, we're making those decisions based on that, we're implementing the intervention, the schedule's being adjusted to maximize that remediation time. Like, everything is right where it needs to be. It's just, okay, well, is it the end of the year? Did we get the assessments yet? And that's a hard place to be in. It's really frustrating because you do that and then you're like, okay, well, it's not there yet. Okay, do I have to wait a whole year again? And that's, it's painful.
Right.
It's painful.
And it's costly for our students, right? So that's the real issue. I mean, we can manage our pain, but who we're hurting is the kid.
So when you said, what would I do? It's the intervention process that we're implementing. That's where I continue to focus because with that, you have those built-in universal screeners that gives us that assessment data. And there is some conversation at the legislative level about potentially, at some point, moving away from those end-of-year summative assessments, moving forward with more formative assessments throughout the year. That's basically what we're doing here because we're going to have multi-three data sets throughout the year, break the year into thirds, and that's basically what we're doing to make sure that students are on track for that end-of-year summative assessment.
Thank you. Appreciate your input.
Yeah. It's the team. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to hearing of visitors. Paul, come on?
Yes.
Mr. Wippen and Board, Mr. Podder.
Mr. Farn and Board of Directors, Association President. I'm here tonight to support two of our outstanding teachers, Mrs. Esser and Professor Solomon Judd. They're going to show up later on the personnel report. And I just wanted to say, as you make your tough business decisions, that you give an opportunity to be, and put a face, and a little bit of what they do in your decision-making. Appreciate it for the opportunity.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I am Senor Solenbergas. Maybe some of you already heard from your kids or students. And I am the Spanish teacher for the high school and this year for the middle school. I am here because today you're making a very important decision for myself and for Mrs. Esser. We are part-time teachers. And last year, my schedule was changed. It was changed to be teaching from the high school and to be traveling in the middle school. When that position was offered to me, when that change in the schedule was offered to me, I was told that I was going to have a travel time and a prep time to compensate for the change. And I was very grateful, and I wanted to tell you all that I really appreciate that change. And it really made an impact on on my schedule because I was able to prep for the new class that I was teaching in the middle school. And I was able to get some compensation for the travel time. The travel time, it was assigned to me as my duty, as it is for some other employees in our school district. There's some other teachers that travel, and they get compensated as their duty. There's administrators that travel, there's maintenance people that travel, and it's part of their compensation. Today, you're making a decision on whether or not to take that away from us, to take that duty time or that prep time. And I'm so grateful for the question that you just asked, Mrs. Esser. Because what do we need? What do we need to have that silver bullet? In the case of Mrs. Esser and myself, we need time to prep. We are getting paid in the next year, as you will see next in paragraph B, the items 2 and 4, page 10 of your of your notes, that we're going to be reduced from 0.75 to 0.5. That means that we're not going to have prep time. That means we're not going to be, our travel time is not going to be our duty. So, that means that all the time that we are going to need to be ready and and implement the components of success that Mr. Boger just presented are are going to be not in our schedule. I really, really encourage you, and I really want to tell you that we both have a big love of students. Myself, last year I had around 100 students. Next year, it seems like I'm going to have about 130, which is more than some full-time teachers. And in the case of Mrs. Esser, she has around 150, maybe 160 students. We don't have, if this change happens today, we won't have any prep time to get ready for testing, to implement all those components that Mr. Boger is presenting, to spend time, extra time with our students, which we want to be there for them. I really, really appreciate your time. I appreciate, yet the last year I had the opportunity to have that prep time. And I really wanted to have some compassion for us because our workload is really, really big. And it's about the same or sometimes more than some full-time teachers. Mrs. Esser, I wanted to explain a little bit more of why do we, why do we need that time? What do we do with that time? So, I want to give a little...
Hi, I'm Joyce Esser. I used to teach Title I reading. And the second week of school this past year, I was switched to FCS, middle school and high school. And with that change, it added another period to my day, but I get the same pay. So, I get paid for half-day, but I'm five eighths because of periods not being back-to-back. I do travel. That's not compensated for in my schedule. But I just want to say that I appreciate the board and its administration recognizing my FCS position this year, which you're going to hear about, it's retroactive here for 0.75. That helps me provide my student instruction. I'm just baffled, dismayed that you would consider moving me back to 0.5 hours and still expect a good quality, which you'll get no matter what. But instructional program, we talked about communication with parents, with staff, with like... I come late and I leave early. So, I don't talk, I don't have team meetings, I don't get to talk to administrators. This year, I got observed, and I was asked to stay after school to go over my observation. Like, I don't have that time. And we have to prepare lesson plans. We need lesson plans for the children that align with the curriculum, that help the students. We need to get into the Google activities, we need to do tests, we need to prepare for projects. We need to email parents. But communication is so important. I get parents emailing me occasionally, not a whole lot, but they want to communicate. I had one woman last year that like eight times on a weekend, that's all I was doing, was going back and forth with her on her child that couldn't locate a paper. Wanted to know how I could get her one, whether she could come pick up another one, whether I could email it to her. So, the communication, I feel, is so important. The academic support. I teach four periods and get paid for four. Like, I had on my own time, kids coming to me for some support. And I am not going to say no, go away, my time's up. Like, I can't. I love these kids, I love my job, I enjoy teaching so much. I want to be available for these children. They email me sometimes for support. And on top of all this, I'm the FCS teacher, so I can't tell you, I don't keep track of it, how many hours it took me to get all my sewing machines up and running for sewing class. Like, or if you know somebody that ever wants to volunteer some time for sewing machines, like... I was on the phone three or four different times with the company trying to figure out why those teeth are working backwards on the... Or why the tension's not right here. But three times, I'm on the phone with the sewing machine companies getting that working. Also shopping. I'm teaching this year an advanced cooking class. That will take a lot of prep, plus on grocery store. I go to the grocery store for my FCS class here, for my FCS class at the high school on my own time. You know, that's what I have to do. And I just think to have, to get paid, you know, 0.75, to have that period, to do... And it wouldn't cover the whole grocery shop, that's fine. But at least give me some time to have some academic support and and everything else I mentioned. But thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to? Any comments to the board? All right, hearing done, moving on to Board of Directors' report. I would like to ask if the board will be okay under personnel report. Moving B5 under Board Director's Report. Is that okay? Moving the personnel. Moving the personnel. B5.
So, it is, B5 reads, approve the appointment of Mr. Antonio Riggins to the position intermediate middle school principal. So, Mr. Riggins is joined by his family this evening, and we thought it might be appropriate to be able to move that up front.
I don't want to watch that.
So, is that okay? I'm trying to be conscious.
So, if that is okay with the board, I'd like to get a motion and a second.
Motion.
Q and A seconds.
So, looking at the Board of Directors' report, there are a few items in that are included here. First is the minutes from the May 2nd meeting. Any corrections that need to be made to those meetings before they're approved this evening? Next up is the first reading of policies. Pretty much those policies are just a routine review, there's really no revisions. The only one that does have a few revisions is in the 709 building security policy. And when you look at that policy, what's included? We've included the information about employee access cards. That's really the main change because a lot of our keys went away from the physical keys to employee access cards. So, we wanted to reflect that appropriately in the policies. So, that is really the only significant change with the first reading policies for B1, 2, 3, 4. Any questions on those? C is the second reading policies. Those were presented last month. Any updates from the board members on those before these are approved this evening? D is to appoint voting delegates to the Pennsylvania School Board Association. That is held, is going to be held September, starting Saturday, November 5th. It's an annual event, it's a it's a big piece, the SBA conference. And they try to get school board members, two school members from each school district to go and represent that, represent the school district, of the five of the school districts in Pennsylvania. So, the question is, is anyone willing to attend that? Whether it's in person at PSBA headquarters, or you could do a virtual option. Well? Do you want to join? Awesome.
Virtual papers, anyone else? Mr. Hefter, Mrs. Walliser?
I don't think I will make that one way or the other at that particular time.
I had a hard time hearing the time. What was it again?
November, Saturday, November 5th. And it's an in-person meeting or a virtual Zoom session. You can choose either one.
And and where where is the location?
At the PSBA headquarters in Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. It's right outside Howesburg. It's right where the SBA 81 split is.
Oh, I think I did do that virtually before, I believe. Yeah, that's no problem.
Yeah.
All right. So, break your debtors. Mrs. Walliser and Mrs. Eisner.
Thank you very much. Item E is to approve an agreement with the Luther Home to use the school district facility as a backup location in case there would be an emergency and a shelter facility. This is a agreement that we have done several years in a row, but we began with the... And there is a reciprocal piece where we use Luther Home as a fallout facility. Item F is to ratify Mr. Sheets to serve as a temporary president to the board to assist in signing the diplomas for students. And then item G is to approve a memorandum of understanding with the Cleveland Police and Rainy One High School District. It's a two-year agreement. There has to be a memorandum of understanding between the police department and the school district. So, typically, we've always had the state police. This now allows us to have a Cleveland police as they serve the Topten. So, Topten is served, the two schools of Topten are the elementary school in this building, the high school is on the state police in Old Town Township. So, that's what this service agreed for. B for the Cleveland Police and state police both service even the borough of Topten. So, we still work with those police departments, even with these two departments. And then finally, as mentioned earlier, we'd be approving personnel B5, which would be the appointment of Mr. Riggins as the intermediate middle school principal. Any questions on those items?
Just to equip, why was item F necessary?
So, Mr. Sheets did help to serve and sign as one of the signing of the diploma this year.
A single diploma.
A single diploma.
Moving on to committee reports. BCIU, is this you?
Good evening, everybody. I asked Sheehy to place a couple of links on the report beyond that in the spirit of time. I'll just direct your attention to that, there's some good useful information there. But the next meeting of the BCIU Board of Directors is this coming Thursday evening.
Thank you. Mr. Sheets? I stepped out. See that? He's ranked one of the others. BEITC, this is the word code.
That's on the report, the next meeting is Thursday, June 15th.
Thank you. Cola, this is Walliser.
The next meeting is going to be September 12th with PSBA.
The board's still yours for policy committee.
Nothing needed report.
Thank you. Predicted planning and goals, Mrs. Eisner? Negotiation committee, Mr. Sheets. So, up there. Building construction, do you want to turn that over to you, Andrew?
Yep, so two important updates for the board in regards to the building construction. I walked through a current this past week with the architect, KCPA, as well as individual appointments with each of the crimes. So, the electric contractor, the HVAC contractor, general contractor, and the plumbing contractor. And so, we went through and had a targeted list of all the things that still need to be completed for this project. And I've created a set schedule for each of those crimes that they, when we dip toward the entire project, we outlawed all those issues that are still remaining. It did, it did get some traction, especially now that the students are out. A lot of workers have been here the last week to help remedy and close out that project. So, I'll keep the board apprised of that, and we finally wrapped that project up. And then the other, you know, important one, if we could just look at our calendars, we have, we are looking at the whole PSC board meeting on the 27th, Monday, the 27th. And that would be more of an informational meeting. It will be a report out from the ESCO. Lou Garrett is our ESCO company that has done work since, really, the late fall through the spring, evaluating different HVAC options, outdoor facility upgrades, the final really phase of the project that we've been talking about for for some time now as we rolled out the project plan. First was the elementary school, then this building, and then this final phase. So, this ESCO company has done that, and they will be providing a report out to the board at that Monday, June 27th meeting. That's it. Is the update for now?
What time is that meeting?
Six o'clock.
Additional board discussion? Hearing on to your roll call, please.
Mrs. Eisner?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffner?
Yes.
Mr. Homentill?
Yes.
Mrs. Keen?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightnowen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets? Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Walliser?
Yes.
Mr. Wagoner?
Yes.
Eight A, motion Hopper.
Congratulations, Mr. Riggins.
Mr. Riggins, would you like to juice your family?
Sure, absolutely. This is my wife, Kimberly. And this is my son, Grayson.
This is quite a wonderful opportunity for Mr. Riggins, but also the school district. I think most of you know Mr. Riggins and what he brings to the leadership realm. But it's a neat story. He started as a, worked himself, well, actually, a student teacher for us, and then worked himself, and then he worked as a gifted teacher. And then he's worked as a dean of students for the last three years. He's made so many awesome connections with the staff, with the students. Completely dedicated to the school district, completely dedicated to events that are happening in the school, outside of school hours, to the community. And he's had a chance to already meet and address the staff, and the response was overwhelming, overwhelming, positive. So, Mr. Riggins, we welcome you to the team, and huge congratulations to you and and your family.
All right, moving on to Business and Operations Report. If I can get a motion and a second. Motion. Second.
Thank you. So, there's quite a bit here. So, I'll kind of go and invite those people, and if anybody has any questions, we'll see if this can, I'll be there to answer them. So, items A through D, these are the bills list through this evening as attached. And then item E is the financial report, so the revenue and expenditure reports, the student activities and trust report, and we have the budget transfers to report. So, getting into special ed people services. Item wanted to kind of go hand-in-hand. We typically approve multi-year agreements for school condition and dental exams for our students. Item one, it says ratify. We actually did approve a three-year agreement, but in the wording, it only listed the two years. So, I'm just bringing this to the board again for approval, so it's shown in the minutes. And then to kind of align the two agreements on multi-year. We approved the one-year, while we're asking for approval for a one-year agreement with Schuman and Schwab to do the dental exams. They are our current provider, and they agree to continue providing those exams at $5 per student. And then we get into a... And then get into a multitude of E S Y agreements, tuition agreements for next year. We're contracting for services for select students. One item to note is we are approving an addendum with E S S. That is sort of, that's number ten. That's sort of, we have addendums and that's sort of to bring the agreement up in, in line with the current wages. So the original agreement only had one item listed and then we did an addendum that had multiple. So there was some discrepancy on, does it just have one item getting raised as a contract stated or do they all? So that kind of clarified the language there. Getting into curriculum and technology. This is to approve our continued participation in the Bucks County Education Technology Pool. To have Sweet Stevens and Williams as our Ubo Council. This is kind of a countywide initiative to provide services and varsity technology specifically. Then we get into facilities and maintenance. Again, there's a lot here. Most of these are annual renewals of service agreements. Item number one is, this is something that we do annually, is to approve unneeded, unnecessary equipment. And the board is actually authorizing this, whether we can sell it or dispose of it depending on its condition. I would say a lot of these presented here are, they were already outdated, obsolete, but we continue to use them to the best of their ability. But now with the Air Products donation, we're officially able to give them in one way or another. And then number two is a three-year contract with H two Lions. They currently provide our HVAC maintenance. This is again, a three-year agreement. We did reach out to them and they gave us a proposal to go forward. It was significantly higher than the current agreement. So then we went out and did it on our feet and again, they were still the low bid. So as with all things, the cost has significantly increased. Over the three years, it's about a hundred and twenty-five dollar increase, but they were still the lowest that are. Number three is to approve proposal with T A elevator to upgrade intermediate middle school elevator. Basically, back in July, we had inspections and they told us that in varying capacity, all three of our elevators have some components that are no longer supported or in need of repair. So we're doing them with our capital, capital projects over multiple years, basically in the order of need. So we're going to start with the intermediate middle school elevator. The next one, this is on the board last agenda. This is a ratified change order regarding the playground at the elementary school. This is the playground of rubber matting as proposed. I believe there are some correspondence regarding the three-inch to four-inch that were shared out. And number five, in the change order with MICO. This is the ongoing, ongoing intermediate middle school project to replace the cabinet, three of the cabinets in multiple classrooms. So number six is to approve a proposal with FMX. They provide our web-based solutions for maintenance, class, planned maintenance, inventory management, dashboards. That's a hundred and fifty dollar increase from last year. Number seven, eight, and there's a couple of, count, which of these? Seven and eight is to approve maintenance agreements. Number seven is with the annual boiler and hot water heater agreement. And then number eight is to inspect and test exhaust goods. I would say a lot, on a lot of these agreements, when we went out and got quotes or bids, we're finding that a lot of people are not responding to bids, simply getting in person that responds. And unfortunately, we're having to utilize their services. Number nine and number fourteen are to approve proposals from Modernfold for inspection services. Number nine is basketball backwards. And number fourteen is the stage ringing. I would note that stage ringing, that was not part of the construction project, so that's why it's on air this evening. Number ten is kind of a one-time non, I should say non-perishance, and that's to remove chemistry lab chemicals. Number eleven is with Pennico excavating to repair concrete sidewalks at the elementary school. Different hands by the capital projects. Number twelve is an annual proposal for the alarm system monitoring that, again, can do that every year. Number thirteen is to approve the bill board of the BCIU for custodial supplies. Fourteen, we had previously mentioned. Number fifteen is to approve food service and repair quotes and agreements with Long Anchor and K and D Factory Service. Again, these are both, those were the only companies that responded to the bids. And number sixteen, this was communicated out on weekly update. This is a two-year contract with True Green to provide field maintenance services with a little bit of twenty-eight thousand. So basically, there's, there's some steps that the district would have to take should they do this in-house. So we're approving that this evening. And should things change on our end and we're able to do that service ourselves, we'll re-apply this contract to True Green. Letter I is to approve subscription to Master Library, that scheduling software that the athletic department uses. Item J is our annual PSBA standard package membership. And then item K, this is an agreement in regards to food service with a B C T C, basically saying that we agree to provide free reduced eligibility information so that they can, they launch it, that they provide to our students. Item L, to ratify the facilities using full harness agreement with Pitts Town University. Letters M through O are awards being approved. I would say letter M is, we're essentially reaffirming it, that scholarship already exists, but they did submit a uniform criteria, didn't change all that much, but just to approve the updated criteria. And also, approve the establishment, establishment of the Jose Klein. That was Arlene's husband, so we're approving that one that was created. And then there's also a life skills achievement award that is being funded to start providing a scholarship next year. So items P, Q, and R, these are done at year-end with the approval of the budget. Item P essentially says that we are allowed to pay bills between now and August typically to hold the bills for board approval. But that's so, you know, we maintain the relations with our, relationships with our renters. And then Q, reminder of the school board policy, sixteen, payment of bills. We approve that should any changes have occurred. And then item R is authorize the business manager to make twenty-one, twenty-two budget transfers after June thirtieth. So once June thirtieth happens, and if there's any line items that are over expended and some that have excess funds due to changing needs over the years, we have the ability to transfer the excess funds and cover the over expended accounts. And then item S, this is to appoint the B C E I T B as our twenty-two, twenty-three, our income tax collector for part of the agreement attached. They have been designated as our E I tax collector, I believe, since 2010. All school districts in the county now use them as their collector. And then item T is to have the county collect our delinquent real estate taxes at a five percent commission. So basically, how that works is come December, in early January, after the December thirty-first due date, the tax collectors, they, they send a report to us, we reconcile it and agree. And then they turn it over to the county. And essentially, we typically get paid when there's a sale. So we'll get our tax, delinquent tax money. Item U, tax collectors collect per capita and real estate, the current ones. And this is author, authorizing them to collect the delinquent per capita taxes. And then we get into item V, which is to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget adoption. Point one, to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget totaling thirty-five million, five hundred fourteen thousand, two hundred thirty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, which reflects a three percent real estate tax increase of one point zero three two six mils, as outlined in the attachment. Item two and three are tax resolutions, basically reacknowledging the per capita taxes, the homestead farmstead resolution, which would be to each household that is approved for a homestead farmstead expulsion, they'll get a reduction in their taxes of two hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety-two cents. This is a sixty dollar increase over the previous year. So while their, the taxes may go up, this will help offset that. And that's a result of basically gambling funds distributed out to the district to about two hundred thousand dollar increase, which is the first time basically since it's been instituted. Number four, no actually required reminder that the board approved resolution in 2012, providing an option for installment of real estate taxes. That's where some people decide to pay in three, like on August thirty-first, October, December, the end line, without penalty. And then item five is to essentially reapprove the assigned fund balance and the usage is outlined below. This is basically what would that be at the end of last fiscal year and then what was built into the budget. Any subtraction should be maximized, any fund balance that we proposed in our budget last year. So that would bring those balances to current as of today, but that'll change. And then we get into number six, the board authorized the business manager or my assistant to assign fund balances needed to balance the net of revenue expenditure from twenty-one, twenty-two per year. So that's what I just noted about any assigned fund balance that we had as part of our budget last year. We have the ability to move that over to the next year.
Mr. Weigand?
Yes.
I guess, I guess a point of order is, is due here. I recall that we, I believe, had table item H four for the playground installation last month. Are we had table that? If I'm not mistaken, I don't know if we need to make a motion to remove it from the table before we can proceed on this. And I was just curious if there was any kind of explanation we got between the, the differences between a three-inch rubber base on the one invoice compared to the four-inch or the other previously?
Yeah, would you not need to make a motion to take it off the table with Mr. Potager can shed light on three inches versus four inches?
Yes, Mr. Hefner. So the, the rationale for the thicker surface area was that part of that area they covered was an existing academy space. And then part of it was stone or ground, ground with stone that was added. So when the compaction rating that they do, it was explained to me that they do it from a fall rating and then simulate a, a body, a student, a young child falling. And so that compaction rating on a hard surface needs to be thicker to be able to absorb that. Hence the four inches versus if you have a stone base, a compacted stone base, it doesn't need as much. And so that's why that's a three, three inch. I will share that now that it's done, the entire area is consistent in terms of, you don't go from a four and then drop down an inch to another area. It's all one's nice, nice smooth area. In, in the agenda, I do believe there is some backup information that was shared with the district that is linked into that agenda there for, that has a little bit more detailed explanation, but that was their rationale.
So in essence, we have one area with four inches and, and the remaining area, the newer area is three inches.
That's correct. But again, when you walk on it, it's all one smooth surface.
Yeah, I had expected that. I, I noticed everything was the same elevation, so that, that explains it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
We've got some follow-up questions. First, just a comment, it's a shame you're not busy at all, Nicole. You have a really long list of things for us to consider. Thank you for your hard work.
Mr. Hefner, if I could just, because you did a perfect segment, I was going to do it very yet. But Nicole has been killing herself and she doesn't have a payroll secretary. So on top of all this, she's running payroll. One night she goes up till eleven, got back up at two A.M. and then works all day. So a huge kudos to her for keeping the operational back end of the district surviving, everyone getting paid and still the budget getting pulled together for the work considerations.
We are going to limit the number of letters we're able to use from the agenda.
I think it's, we, we get to double A, that's when we, that's when we cut you off. Just a couple of quick follow-up items. So under H, number one, the list of unneeded and unnecessary supplies being liquidated. I don't know, Tom, back in the day, he ran some red tag sales and that kind of thing. Is that what the intention is this time around? Same sort of thing, public notify the community? Okay, because I do see two vehicles, the two thousand and five truck and the forty hundred line van. It looks like maybe two thousand and six. And while to us, they're in poor condition and maybe not ideal for students, vehicle values for used vehicles, even in poor condition, are way more than they ever used to be. So they're not, they're, they're not junk.
Yeah, correct. So items such as those, we either do red tags out or municipal it. Those two particular items, we probably would municipal it just because there's a larger market, so we apply different money for it.
Fabulous. Okay, great. On number, under H, number eleven, the item to approve the proposal from a company to repair the concrete sidewalks at the elementary school at a cost of nineteen thousand, six hundred. Help us understand, it just seems surprising to me, given that we just completed the construction project a couple of years ago. Which sidewalks are we talking about and why is that necessary?
So it's sidewalks that are in the front of the building as part of the project. Those areas were not improved. So these are dated areas that are, that are cracked, that through, through the winter, fall, trees, they're starting to blow apart.
So not near the front entrance?
No, 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 no. Yeah, so you're right. The front entrance had, the very front entrance had an old area.
Right.
This is more of a, a walking area up to it or down the line towards where it keeps getting bus.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And I, I will note that, I forget the number, I think it's three thousand, four hundred dollars will come back to the district off of that because some damage was done during the playground installation. And so we've worked with the contractor and they will be reimbursing the district for some of that.
Great.
I think it's three thousand, four hundred.
Okay. As it relates to item V five, just a quick point of note. It says to authorize the business manager or assistant business manager. Is it not true that we no longer have an assistant business manager? That title was changed, was it not?
Yeah, so that should be changed to supervise our financial services.
And then final question on B, number one, the approval, or request to approve for the overall budget for next year. Can you give us a quick status update? At one of the fairly more recent budget meetings, we had sort of put together a plan and then we had a long conversation about it pending notification from the Pennsylvania State about the governor's budget and the status of that in the legislature. Just if you would, give us kind of today's latest update. You know, we need to have this budget completed and submitted by June thirtieth, yet we haven't received final confirmation of what revenues we'll be receiving from the state.
Correct. So in the budget, there we have basically a two and a half percent increase from the state, which is over a historical increase. That also equates to about what was originally sixteen percent of the governor's proposed increase. That's six hundred thousand or closer, seven hundred thousand. I would say on Saturday, Padsville, I'm not sure where they got their information from, but there were some updated figures that have not been published yet, saying that our increase is going to decrease to five hundred thousand something. So that equates to we have about twenty percent increase in the building's budget, which is still two and a half percent from a historical. They kind of captured that as change in census data for what that means, whether not so much, you know, we have defined the public, but not as much of this change in demographics outside of our district. So that's what we have. I would say the governor's office has put out a lot of reading material on, kind of a hesitation on a lot of people to approve this huge increase in funding, his one-time funds. You know, they're sitting on extra money. But then the governor did put out a lot that, you know, they have the two millions that can bring you days' months. But they're also getting, you know, unprecedented increases in revenue coming in that they deny instantly, but they, you know, see decreasing. So there's kind of a lot of back and forth about those and kinds. So, but again, they really have no answer. It's still all speculation depending on what your views are, what your speculations are, depending on who you talk to. But I would say talking this with other business managers or in a fairly similar vote. I mean, some people are wishing and hoping more proceeds come to them funding with a lower tax increase. But then they, that can, you know, quickly eat your fund balance if we don't. So some people are taking that risk, so it's kind of a give or take. So that's kind of where I, I would say. So that's kind of where I, I would say, you know, 3% would give us stable funding, um, kind of essentially balances the budget. As you pull out that budget share, we care if that is funded or funded balance. Um, so next year we should be on stable grounds, uh, our revenues for our expenditure, so, you know, with all the support that we're seeking, just in terms of cost of inflation, um, it brings us that sort of a shift rate, uh, so we should, uh, work on that.
Thank you. Mr. Weigand, I would be encouraged to move on, uh, B, number seven.
So we need to amend the motion.
You're good with that? She, you okay with that?
All right, so could I get a roll call on all items except for V1?
Will you repeat that, please?
Could I get a roll call vote for all items except for V1?
Me as in Victor?
Correct.
Thank you.
That would be the general fund budget vote.
Right.
Mr. Weigand, you mean just item D? Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Howenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're doing.
Everything.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yes. Yes, 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 for the whole alphabet except for V1. Yes. Mr. Reigand?
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stupitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Weigand?
Yes.
98 motion passes.
All right, now could I get a roll call vote for, uh, item V1?
Mr. Howenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hune?
No.
Mr. Reigand?
No.
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stupitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
No.
Mr. Weigand?
Yes.
68s, 3nas, motion passes.
All right, moving on to superintendent's report, making a motion in a second. Motion.
Second.
So a couple of items under, uh, superintendent report, we have the listed graduates, there are 120 graduates, the school district that graduated for the class of 2022, so a huge congratulations to them. Uh, it'll be neat to see, always so neat to see where they go, hasn't been seen in your life, but, um, they're all off this, are many, uh, awesome opportunities looking ahead. Um, B is for this, for myself, to make employment commitments similar to like we have approved, uh, Mr. Warko to do, uh, financial transactions, this allows us to make employment commitments. We will bring those back to the board at the, uh, August 15th, be ratified, but it allows us to make those commitments in between, uh, that way we don't lose train dates to other, other school sher, so we can split by our, our employment board. Uh, item C and D are linked together, uh, for dual enrollment agreements moving forward for next year. Uh, item E and F are second readings of curriculum. Uh, item G is the revised student schedules that Mr. Walker presented earlier, uh, with the big emphasis being that increase in high school instructional time to seven hours a day. Uh, item H is to approve the special education comprehensive plan. Dr. Reese had provided an overview at the last board meeting, uh, this is the official vote of that special education comprehensive plan. It is, uh, as you can see, runs through 2025. Item I, uh, is to, uh, approve an agreement with, uh, Muhlenberg School District to, uh, allow our students to engage in water polo. So it's a really neat opportunity, uh, PIAA has started to encourage, uh, and even has reduced the, uh, level of barriers, uh, associated with making partnerships like this, before it had to be a contiguous school district, it no longer has to be anymore. Uh, and there are six students that are interested in this being water, water polo, and obviously we don't have a pool, that's why we're gonna make you agree with this, so, um, pretty neat opportunity for us to do that. Uh, Muhlenberg, uh, is in full support of that as well. Um, item J is to, uh, is part of the guest teacher programs, allows a, uh, an individual that is not a certified educator to get a training and then become a substitute for the school district. Uh, item K is to approve an emergency instructional time. So essentially what this does, if you think back, it allowed the school district to, uh, engage in education, whether that was a virtual environment or an in-person environment. That's essentially what this clause does, it allows us that flexibility in how we, uh, teach our students. Uh, that's what we use for our, uh, virtual winter weather days this year. Uh, it excludes that moving forward, uh, so that's why you approved the physical instructional days, uh, last month, uh, and though we still can do five virtual instructional days, but it has a limit to it. This is honestly just a safe card, but we figured, let's just put it on there, just as a safe card, uh, in case something would happen, pandemic related or otherwise. Those are the items on the superintendent report. Any questions?
The question on, um, item I, the cooperative agreement with Muhlenberg, so it's six or so students that are interested, um, what's the arrangement in terms of transportation?
So, uh, Mr. Geist, did I, uh, and Mr. Geist, you can speak if I just be, just a quick, uh, in terms of this, um, agreement, because it is non-contiguous, we are not looking to do transportation because of the challenges we are having in finding van drivers and in trying to coordinate that, it becomes, uh, very, very challenging, even with, uh, the ones we have existing, Chris Tundit only, often Mr. Geist or his assistant are doing those van runs, and so this would not, would not include transportation.
Okay.
It, it doesn't exclude it, but at this point we, we don't want to, we don't feel like we can operationally sustain that.
And is there, given that, and I totally understand, is there any concern with equity across the various sports, particularly those other partnerships where it's not a brand new one?
The only thing I would say to that is equity, yeah, but I also look at, I think as moving forward, we have to look at the number of students impacting the participate. So, for instance, like with track, going over to Kuztun, we have 32 kids that are going over there, so, you know, there I can see a justification for providing transportation. Same with, with the football club, large number of athletes, you know, five or more students. If we get like a mass of people that wouldn't do water polo, then I think it's something that we can look into. Um, you know, like I said, once we have a partnership and it's offered, officially offered to students, we can see how many students are really gonna, you know, sign up and participate. As you know, with any survey, it's easy to go and say, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I'll play a waterfall, that sounds like fun, until they really.
They have to wear their cap.
Yes. So, you know, I think it's, it's, I, I would say, you know, it's not a great answer, but it's on a case by case basis.
Well, certainly initially better to offer the opportunity than not have the opportunity at all, um, and I guess we can position it as an incentive for those families to grow, help grow the program and create some mass, and then they have a stronger argument, I guess, to try and get some funding for transportation. Fair enough. Good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? You read none? Could I get a roll call?
Mrs. Hune?
Yes.
Mr. Reigand?
Yes.
Mr. Stupitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Howenshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Weigand?
Yes.
88s motion passes.
All right, moving on to personnel report, making a motion in a second.
You, second.
But just, I don't think Mr. Sheetz would mind saying, you know, the thing we already seen a definite table, so he didn't step, step out. Um, so personnel report, just so everyone knows what's going on with some of the personnel items here, we have some resignations, some key ones to point out, uh, Mr. Barnhart has accepted a position, uh, in, as a high school assistant principal in another school district, so we wish him the best of luck. Uh, Ms. Tenell, who's one of our elementary, uh, teachers, a phenomenal teacher, uh, is gonna be, uh, taking a position in a district closer to her home. And, uh, Mr. Valado, who's been a longtime guidance counselor with us, is gonna be accepting a position, uh, down south in the school district, so we wish them all the best of luck as they continue on their, uh, professional careers and move forward. Uh, some changes statuses to note, uh, particularly, uh, number one, uh, Ms. Don, Mrs. Don Olivo, who's been a long time employee with us, a food service employee, is gonna be taking over the, uh, food service head cook position. If you recall, last month, we recognized Carol Berryner, who's been here with the district 40 years, uh, she's gonna be filling those huge shoes. Uh, we already addressed, uh, Mr. Riggins, uh, in the, uh, first floor section, this is the other one, the one in the highlighting. Uh, we, we do have, uh, the changes here, uh, as Mrs. Solenberger and, uh, Mrs. Esser, uh, spoke to earlier, uh, there, there were some, uh, adjustments that were made this year, uh, and as we look, uh, forward to, uh, this upcoming year, uh, we would be following what is, uh, in the district, uh, contract as what's proposed here this evening. Uh, that's what, uh, both, uh, Ms. Esser and, uh, Mrs. Solenberger spoke to, and I appreciate them coming out this evening, uh, expressing the challenges that it is to be a part-time employee and the challenges that it is to, to go back and forth in different buildings, uh, but ultimately when we look at what's in, in the contract, this is what spelled out here this evening in number two, three and four, would be in line with what's in the, uh, in the teacher contract. Um, item C1 is, uh, to approve, uh, Kent Spark, uh, teachers as well as our ESY programs, so Kent Spark and ESY run, uh, in tandem, and they'll run from July 11th to July 28th. Uh, support staff, we have a recommendation this evening, uh, to approve Aaron Dobbs as new payroll benefit specialist, so, uh, that is, uh, an exciting addition for, uh, Mr. Warko and her staff. We also are looking to, uh, approve some student workers, uh, as you can see here, some interesting and fun news, we had 14 students starting with this summer, or, uh, today, uh, as summer workers, so an awesome addition and slate to, uh, getting work done, getting the buildings up, up to speed during the summer. Uh, we have, uh, long-term substitute approvals moving forward for next year, uh, these all, these staff are all staff that were with us, uh, last year and will continue in, in different roles. We have, um, co-curricular appointments that are on here, we have, uh, a neat opportunity for us to, uh, grow with our high school girls' basketball head coach, uh, and so we're looking this evening for approval for Mr. Beaver. Mr. Geist has went through a, uh, multi-tiered, um, interview process, including students at a, a student panel and have come to selection of Mr. Beaver as the new high school girls' basketball coach. Uh, some other, uh, coaching, uh, and co-curricular appointments there. And then item E, I'd like to just, uh, bring some highlight too, that is our department heads, these, uh, individuals serve as leaders within their, uh, selected curriculum capacities, uh, and we thank them for their service. A lot of these staff members, most of these staff members, uh, are continuing on their leadership roles, uh, and it, which really helps to build that continuity and that work closely with Mr. Walker and the, uh, CLI department. Uh, we have a few leaves on the agenda tonight, two sabbatical leaves, they're half-year, first half of the year sabbatical leaves, uh, one unpaid leave and one medical leave, uh, as noted. There is, uh, also always the, the privilege, the honor, uh, if you will, to grant tenure. Uh, this is, uh, something that a staff member in, as an educator, uh, has to go through in the part, as part of the Department of Education in Pennsylvania, uh, and there are certain required requirements to do that, including the induction program, having a certain number of, uh, satisfactory, uh, years of service, uh, and then the board, uh, is able to grant tenure. So there's four staff members we're gonna be granting tenure to this evening, Mary Woodville, Linda Warner, who's, or we like to warn her, who's one of our librarians at the elementary school, uh, Ms. Miller, uh, who is our teacher in the high school, uh, Mrs. Weigand, who's a learning support teacher at the intermediate school, and then Ms. Usella, who's our high school guidance counselor. So a huge congratulations to them, if they approve this evening. We also have, uh, the approval of additional, uh, learning days, or additional staff days over the summer for our school psychologists and guidance counselors. These days go above and beyond what's in the BIA contract of, as 189 days, uh, and these help to prep for the summer schedules, for the summer work in terms of school psychologists doing the evaluations of students over the summer as they prepare for their next school year. Uh, item F3 is the approval of the, uh, salaries for administrators, the managers and the support staff for the upcoming year. Uh, item 4 is the approval of, uh, my end year evaluation, and I think just publicly thank the board for your support, uh, throughout the year, uh, and for your ongoing support for many years and for the phenomenal ratings they were, I greatly, greatly appreciate that and continues to be, uh, a blessing to be able to serve here in this district. Um, we have a support, uh, substitute rates as well, as well as, uh, starting rates for our support staff. Uh, as you can see here, we put in the 21, 22 rates and the 22, 23 rates, they are, uh, some, I dare say significant, uh, increases from, from where they were, uh, the board made some steps to address that in December, uh, and continue to extend that, uh, increases to hourly wages for these, uh, key individuals in our team. Uh, when we look at what the employment market is, this is definitely a necessary step to stay competitive, but also, uh, an, an equity standpoint in some way to make sure we treat our staff, uh, fairly, uh, and compensate them fairly. So I appreciate, uh, the support on, and, and the suggestion to move those started wages up. And finally, there is, there was some, uh, conflict with the Act 93 agreement, uh, in terms of the vacation day language, there's a, uh, there was some, some wording in that benefit that had to be clarified, and so this agreement, this, uh, update truly just is a reflection of those changes that are being made to the Act 93 compensation plan, just to adjust that, that wording for, for those vacation days. And that is the personnel, I almost, I, uh, Mr. Warko. Any questions on those items?
Two quick questions, um, the students, employees that are working this summer?
Yes.
Um, so love the fact that we're, um, engaging kids from the community, can you help us understand what, um, jobs, who, who are they bumping out? And if they're not bumping out, if they're brand new positions, help us understand what 14 kids times $14 an hour times all summer in terms of incremental work, what are we getting? What are, what new projects, what initiatives, what are we buying with that, that investment?
Yeah, absolutely, great question. So it's, it's a twofold, so if you remember, uh, towards the end of last year, we brought, um, students on as, uh, custodian helpers, and so those, I guess you wanna call them employment commitments ended, and so these staff, these students coming in helped fill that void, and so they will be doing routine cleaning, uh, going through, we, we typically do summer help with other individuals that would come in for that, sometimes it was other support staff that would help, sometimes it was individuals outside the school district that would come in and support, uh, and so the students are filling some of that in terms of the, the deep cleaning, the classrooms, the hallways, all those spaces. Additionally, um, the big part is we get to do a lot more projects, so we're looking to do some painting projects, we're looking to do, uh, work, uh, the, the principals all have, uh, identified targeted projects they'd like to see done to better improve their facilities, and so they're looking to address and work with, uh, Mr. Wessel and the principals to really knock out some of these projects that otherwise maybe wouldn't have got done, so it's, it's a pretty good, I mean, kids are really excited.
I'm sure, yeah, and financially for the district, do you think it's roughly net-net or is there a cost savings involved?
Uh, I'd say net-net.
Okay, but certainly not an increase.
Yeah, it's, it's not above and beyond.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, um, one other question, so on the, I think it's called co-curricular list, um, I saw, Mr. Geist, your, um, I forget what season it's listed as, but the, the rifle team, so, uh, board meeting or two ago, the board supported, um, the initiation of a, what I thought was a rifle club, maybe I was confused, so I'm just looking for a little bit of clarity, it now appears to be rather than listed in like a club list for the high school, it's now listed as a sport in Mr. Geist's world. So is that, was that a change or did I just misunderstand the initial approval?
We, we were running it as a, it's called rifle club, we were running it as a sports team, uh, and, and there was the identification of a coach to be able to do that, to do that process.
Okay, and the coach has not yet been identified, at least on the document that I saw recently, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We've identified a coach.
What season is that sport, like what's our timing for identifying that and funding that?
So, um, my understanding is the season is quite limited, um, it pretty much goes throughout the year, so it starts probably, uh, late September, October, and runs through April, so there's little breaks in between, but it's pretty much a throughout the school year.
Okay. Okay, okay. So in theory, if we're going to launch that program for the forthcoming year, we would need to backfill that position within the next few months?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Mr. Geist, can you please refresh my memory on the cost of this team?
So first of all, we're looking to again, a lot of that cost offset by donations within the community. So at this point, the goal is to have it be cost neutral to start.
There is also, there are time gives and grants that there are, so.
Yeah, there's several grants we're exploring right now that seem very plausible.
And if we don't get them, what would the cost be?
So that, if I remember, I'm going off the top of my head, but if I remember the cost to do everything, if you didn't phase it in, was around twenty thousand.
And how many students can participate?
At this point, we were looking about, it's really not limited, but we were targeting about fifteen.
And is it high school only?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to move back on the comment, it's not limited. That confuses me just a little bit because I thought one of the reasons why we weren't able to partner with Cookstown Program and leverage that is because there was sort of a headcount count. And related to maybe the equipment, the number of rifles or the number of targets or the number of what all the supplies are.
Yes, you are right. The reason I say it's not limited is we wouldn't want to turn a student away. So what we would end up probably having to do is alternate. So like a Tuesday would be like a set of students, Thursday, Wednesday might be another set of students. If we've got like so many students we put in there, but it is definitely limited based off of equipment. And so that becomes a limiting factor.
Okay, and in terms of the board's approval, I believe that twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars is what was proposed. So that if there was a need to expend more than that, the expectation I understand would be that y'all would come back to us and say, hey, things have shifted, we need some additional support.
Correct.
Okay, okay, all right. And I believe we were notified that we did get an initial donation of like three thousand dollars or something. Can you share who that was from? And does that not have to, by board policy, need to be approved by the board? Like other donations need to be approved?
It would be accepted. There's two and eight. The one is, how about I do it in August so I don't miss any?
Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's fine. But yeah, I'm surprised because I thought when we received money from sources, while we love that, bring it on, right? I think there is a process that we need to document that publicly.
Yep.
And have the board approve the receipt of those funds and the allocation of those funds to the program.
I have a question on this co-curricular also. Is this updated, what we have in here right now with the coach assignments?
Yeah.
How do we not have any middle school coaches?
Because they're resigning and we have them out there at, at, we're receiving applications. We have, we are in the process of interviewing this week. There's some vacant positions. However, there's usually only one candidate per position right now. So we do need the middle school positions open a little bit longer since we don't have the volume of applicants. We try to generate an applicant pool. Right now, we have about one current position that applies. So we are starting to interview those candidates this week.
Where are they advertised on the website?
And they go out to the search engine, then people are looking for positions, it goes out there. We also have talked to various other organizations that have people that are looking for jobs. And they send that out to individuals that are looking for coaching positions. So we use also District Three website, the CIAA, sometimes will post it for us as well to get, to generate an applicant pool.
It's really scary to see that there are no coaches yet for middle school.
The other issue we have with middle school is a lot of our coaches are young coaches. And what happens a lot of times is that they get another job, a real job, so to speak, and their work no longer enables them to continue the coaching. That's one of the issues, that's why we have such a high turnover with our, with our middle school coaches.
Is it not also true that once you have the varsity coach in place and there's an expectation that that varsity coach structure the program all the way down through the ranks, including at the middle school and at the local youth level, that those relationships are being cultivated? And so once you have a varsity coach in place, then it may be easier to backfill some of those middle school positions?
Yeah, and you know, a lot of our varsity coaches will do that. They know people that, you know, that they would coach with, or they know someone that is interested in coaching. Yes, that facilitates that communication and that teamwork, bringing on somebody that they know and are familiar with their coaching. And then also building those relationships. Unfortunately, the biggest issue that I've seen with our middle school coaches is in fact that they're young and they're developing coaches, but also that, you know, their job situation changes frequently, their schools change frequently, and it's hard for them to stick around long term.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I think we'll, oh, sorry.
What happens if you don't hire a middle school coach? So what happens to that team?
You don't have a coach, it's hard to have a team. Unfortunately, I mean, fortunately, we haven't gotten to that point where we had to, that we weren't able to find a coach.
Yeah, I don't think that's ever happened, Mr. Geist, hasn't it? We've come down to the wire.
Sure leading is always my ulterior motive, questioning, so you know I'm asking for that reason.
And we do have a, you know, like you said, we are starting an interview process. We do, we do have candidates. Just right now, it's one-on-one interview, I have one candidate for each middle school position. So the interview is an interview of one right now. So that's why we try and tend to leave those positions open a little bit longer, to see if we do get any additional applicants. I'll be honest, in my past experience here, later in June, when school ends and we get into July, we seem to get more people, oh, there, I'd like to apply for this position. That's why I like to give a little more, more time.
Can we put something out at least to the families? Because, I mean, just blast out that the middle school needs coaches. I mean, parents might know people or something.
It's a good point, I mean, we can send out a, we've done that in the past too. Senator, I can send something out via the new messaging system to say, hey, we're still looking for this. That's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you.
And leverage your social media sites, middle school and athletics.
Anything else? Hearing none, like your roll call, please?
Mr. Rainower?
Yes.
Mr. Stupitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eisenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Hafner?
Yes.
Mr. Hohenschel?
Yes.
Mrs. Heem?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
AKA, motion pass.
All right, any additional public comment? Hearing none of the additional board discussion. Yes, okay, so, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, never seen one of these people.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
I'm Alicia Burns, so you may know my daughter Taylor Byrne, and I'm Mr. Wagner. She's a graduate, and how do you say, this is the first time I've ever had to come to one of these meetings with a little bit of displeasure that I've just been encountered. So I heard a couple of words in all of these presentations here today, Mr. Walker's communication word. Everything is key, communication is key. Miss Pye, I'm sorry, I'm getting up now to name correctly. Equity is one of the words that came out of your mouth. And those are two things that are right in front of my face today with the displeasure that I have in how the Europe trip was handled. In two thousand and twenty was the first year that the group was supposed to go to Europe. And we all know what happened there, COVID hit, nobody could go anywhere. Everybody understood that. The graduating seniors that year had their tickets purchased by the school district, which is a whole talk story. This year, my daughter was planning to go on the trip. The trip was postponed in December from a communication that we received. And that was kind of the last communication that I heard about the trip, which was very unnerving. I continued to ask Taylor, you know, are you hearing anything, are you hearing anything? I reached out to Mrs. Wilder at one point and said, you know, I heard she was a great client, that maybe there's something going on with this trip. And I heard nothing. So Taylor graduated, so now she's a graduated student. She's not able to attend this tour because it's only for students. So we were given the option, I said maybe because Emerson's parents are here with him, and she's been the same as Taylor. And we got the option of getting a refund of part of the trip, but eating five hundred and sixty-five dollars, which is where the equity comes in. How is it that some students that were scheduled to go on this trip got full refunds and some didn't? I don't understand how all that played out. And, you know, maybe there is some solid reasoning behind it, but I don't know what it is. So I would ask the board, maybe look into that, find out some facts, and maybe be able to tell us some of that information so that we can say, okay, you know, I know with any, you know, trip, you take a risk. I had a couple of trips planned personally during this COVID time, I better repay that from, you know, room board at places, airline tickets, all of that stuff. So I'm a little, you know, confused as to why we paid for travel insurance and here we're going to eat five hundred and sixty-five dollars. I have a student going to college next year, you know, I have to buy some books. So it's, you know, it's significant to me, that's why I'm here.
Well, Lucas Afgar, Emerson Afgar's father. My main objective claim is, just want to kind of get this into the minutes. Almost during a school year, almost a daily basis, there's at least two or three emails that come out, which is fantastic, I mean, you keep parents well informed of the activities, whether it's signing up for a youth soccer team or a band concert. But at the same time, we had a Zoom meeting in December during winter break. And the discussion there was that Europe was off the table because of COVID and some possibilities of picking back up. And the decision was made that students would do a continental United States trip. There was a few options that were presented that night. And they were told, parents as well as children were told that once they got back to school, within a week or two of coming back from winter break, there would be meetings set up to decide when and where they would be going. And I trust Emerson to not lie to me. Many of you know her. She was basically left the dog. And we, Taylor was as well. And I think part of that, and this is something moving forward, I think, the board and the administration has realized that when these kids are doing these afternoon internships, they're no longer in the building. And a few of the meetings they had to discuss and decide where they were going, Emerson was at the elementary school, she was not even informed of the meetings personally. The one meeting she does know that she was invited to was canceled due to weather, I believe, and rescheduled dates she was not invited to. I think a lot of that was the fact that she was not in the building. And then Taylor, it was the same, kind of same boat. So that's one thing I would, for future plans, I think that's something that needs to be addressed. That when these announcements are made in the afternoon for a meeting, the children aren't in the building if they're doing outside internships, which I believe, you know, is very beneficial to their careers. The other thing is, so everything that we received information-wise was third-party from a friend of a friend that was there. Nothing from the administration came through. We actually never even were told that the trip was canceled until we received the email saying, here's your options. You're, take the refund minus the deposit, or you have fifteen months to reschedule a trip through the tour company. But through that entire period, and I understand from what I've heard through different sources, that there was a lot of problems trying to coordinate the trip with the tour company and the school district. I don't know the details of that, because we're probably to that. But none of that information was ever presented to the families, at least our families. As far as, okay, we're trying to do this, these are the dates we're looking at. Oh, no, these dates are available, or they can't provide this service. And that's the frustration, frustrated part is, because up until, so I know like in March, I believe is when the decision was made that we can't schedule, or was it, it was April. Emerson came home very distraught, she's like, I just want to take my ticket and we'll just use it for whatever. And we're like, no, we don't know what's going on yet. What you're saying is going on is from a third party, we don't know that. We haven't heard anything from the school yet as far as this trip is officially canceled. And until that time comes, we're not going to, you know, forego the trip if it's still a possibility. Obviously, now it's no longer a possibility, being that they have graduated. Just saying, that's my point, my discussion, I just want to express the frustration that in some ways, the school is fantastic with communication. And in here, it's a situation where these families have put out, you know, thirty-six hundred dollars that they're, that's sitting in an account somewhere, and the communication, basically, we got ghosted for six months. And that's my frustration on the trip part. And then, like I said, I'm not blaming anyone for the trip not happening. I know there's a lot of, I know there's a lot of trips that were probably planned that got canceled, and it was just a mad, mad rush to try and get these dates scheduled. And that's the only other thing that I would say tonight is that when we had that meeting in December, and I don't know if the tour company misled the advisor or if it was just an assumption by the school that these trips were planned, we were basically told any trip that they wanted was going to happen. It wasn't like, we're going to try and make it happen. It was basically, and I don't know if that was, tour company just kind of like trying to make all these different schools that they were taking money from to try and make them all happy, saying that we can accommodate all these different tours. And then the only other thing was, when it was decided to do the Grand Canyon this year, I guess my only other question was, when that became, when it started looking like that was a possibility, I just don't know if anything else was just explored.
Yes, the timeline of communication from December until after Emerson graduated was zero to the parents. And that's not just us or her, it's zero because I've talked to other parents about it. And that's where I think we're upset about it. Okay, if I'm going to have to eat five hundred dollars that I put out three years ago, I would at least like somebody from the school district to come out and tell me that. And not tell me after I called in the middle of May to talk to somebody and not getting a phone call returned until June third, when pretty much my students graduated. So the lines of communication were definitely not there. And as Mrs. Burns said, in two thousand and twenty, when the vouchers were bought by the school district, we were told, they bought them because there were no other options for those students. They weren't, they weren't going to get any refund. Well, I've talked to other parents that have gone full refund, not by the school district, but by the tour company. So there's a lot of different discrepancies as to this group of students got this, this group of students got offered this. And we're sitting here at the very end for three years with no real resolution at this point due to a lot of lack of communication on, on the school district. And I understand the tour company can change their policies throughout these events. Everybody's changing things and changing their policies. But I think it needs to have been a better job done of relaying to parents.
But I think it needs to have been a better job done of relaying to parents throughout the last six months, what was, what was happening here. Like you said, our daughter wanted to just eat the $500. No, that's not happening in my house. I want to know from somebody up here that's gonna tell me this is what your options are. So those are the reasons why we're here today. Because we just feel like at this point, we have not been given the same things that parents in the past have been given as far as this trip. And I, we realized, no one thought three years later, we'd be still talking about this trip. But I know in 2020, the main gripe between those parents was that they didn't want to take those vouchers either. The reason they didn't want to take those vouchers as seniors is because how, when am I gonna schedule my senior to go away with two or three friends when they're going away to college? And we have a year to do that. And that's another reason for the lack of communication. Because had we known in, say, March, we could have already started a voucher and a process of planning the trip with our girls or whoever didn't go on the trip. Now we're three months, four months later and we're still trying to decide, what, what are we gonna do here? So I just like the board to appreciate, you know, some of the issues that have arisen that have come up in the past six months, basically, of no communication.
Well, thank you, guys. And sorry that happened. And I think the board will dig into some backfinding for you and see what we can come up with and, you know, with any of those lines of communication to see what is anything that's possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
So just a, a couple of points. And let me just first apologize for the frustration, obviously, that you guys have. I didn't understand if I were in your shoes, it is there. So we had that meeting in December, kind of laid everything out. And everything you guys said is absolutely correct. The, the communication side of it that went to students through the classroom, through some of the meetings that occurred, I think there's some really good points of, that, that you have brought up that need to be evaluated and moving forward. Obviously, we can't go back and change it, I wish we could. But instead of doing direct communication to students, you, you talked about really good points about students that are outside of the classroom, the ability, outside the ability of internships, created educational opportunities for a future point, but they're missing that. And so that's an absolute learning point for us. Mr. Gins and I have been in close contact about this through that process as well. The, the other piece is communicating with, with you as parents. And so we really did lean on heavily on that, that communication with the students through the classroom, through those individual group meetings that occurred. But we, we should have done a better job of communicating to you as parents, saying, okay, here's a status update. We did fully intend to do a domestic trip like that. We were pretty much promised in December, like, that's what we're doing. You're right, that's, that's what we had presented. For 10,000 and various reasons, that never happened. We, we pushed really hard. We, we were back and forth on dates. We were definitely really swift on May, to push May. And there was no slots available for us to be able to do that, that tour. So that's part of the lag in terms of why you finally got notification that the trip was, was canceled, even though we had essentially canceled it back in, the Europe portion of it back in, in December. It took that long for you to finally say, sorry, we're gonna pull the plug. We can't do a domestic trip for you, while you finally found out in March. Again, as I said, this is, we should have communicated to you ahead of, through that process.
So my, my point is, so they canceled the trip? Is that what you said? You just said they canceled, they pulled the plug?
They, they, they did not have any dates for us during the square. Yeah. So I shouldn't say they, they pulled the plug.
Well, just saying, because if they did, then...
They didn't have any dates for us.
But the whole trip has been wonderful to us from them.
Yeah, I would, absolutely.
Right. We canceled the Europe.
We canceled the Europe, but the domestic side of it, we were looking to do a domestic one. They, they were not able to give us any dates that were within the square.
So my follow-up question to that is, there are still, I believe, kids that are signed up for the trip that picked up maybe the vouchers that you bought. Is there a status update on that trip? Or what, you know, because there's probably parents of kids that are now gonna be seniors that still are holding on to this, the trip. And so what's, what's the status on that?
For, for future?
For future, because there's kids out there that hasn't tripped totally.
Yep.
All trips been canceled for everybody. Or are seeing, new seniors gonna be able to go on a trip? That's my question.
I don't, I don't have a definitive answer for you with that. Because that, that decision hasn't been made for the future of what that trip could look like or where it's gonna go or the, the goal is to, yes, hold another trip. What's that, where that's gonna be? Is it gonna be a London trip? Is it gonna be a Europe, Eastern Europe trip in light of all the Ukraine thing? Probably not the best scenario. So there's a lot up in the air. I think Covid has, there's a lot of, even this past week, they have opened up for, for travel overseas that make it a lot more plausible. So all those are factors that are now, but the place hasn't been identified. The goal is to keep someone there. Again, my sincere apologies. I, I really feel bad for the kids. I really do. That, that was the goal, is to get them somewhere and I'm sorry.
So just a, am I live to talk?
Sure.
Why didn't sign up? Why didn't, why didn't sign up? But I didn't actually know there was even an option. So I have students that I paid for as well and did not get communication for at all. And I called and called and did speak with the teacher. And she says she didn't think there was gonna be any future trips. So that it was gonna be, I didn't even know that there was plans of something in the United States of a trip. Like, I never heard anything of, this is all brand new, actually. And I was part of this. So I was told either I can take the voucher, do it on my own, or I eat that almost $600. So I didn't even know, because she, she said, we can't even promise we're gonna be doing the trip. It's not, we don't know what's gonna happen. So I was more or less led to believe that I need to just eat the $600 to get the money back.
So the domestic trip we talked about back in December, when we did the parent meeting and the PowerPoint, that was, that was identified then. And then through the spring, we worked to try to establish that. And that's where the, the student meetings were held, the conversations were done, through the classroom, this sort of thing. The, the future trip, my guess is the teacher didn't say this is, because there's nothing to identify. There's no like, here's where we're going. The goal was to do, to go somewhere, but there's nothing that, that was identified. Whether the trip, the teacher that coordinated the trip this year is gonna be the one that runs it or not. I don't know that either.
And the board certainly hasn't approved any of the trips.
Right, absolutely.
So no trips can occur without, like, overseas or, or overnight trips without board approval.
That's great.
Continue the backfinding here and circle back and definitely improve that communication moving forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your comments.
When, when would we anticipate to hear something? Just so I have an expectation and I'm not emailing people.
I would say if you give us two weeks.
So that, whatever, just I have an expectation, whatever it takes, because I know it's busy. It takes some time to get all the facts.
What else are we needing in terms of communication? For, so we identified the communications is an issue.
Right.
We gotta work down that moving forward. The, do you have the information for me at tour at this point?
I have a voucher last month, $565, which I really don't want to have to eat, especially in light of the fact that other students didn't have to eat that.
Have you contacted the tour company?
I tried today numerous times, you know, I, I work all day. And of course, that's the only time you can call these people. And it was, you know, on hold forever because, you know, call volume's high because now everything's opening up and all of their tours are starting to open up again. So, you know, can I try more days? Yes.
I did contact the tour company back in, maybe April. And they said that we actually have a good deal of our stuff, only losing $600.
Can you say that again? What'd you say, Kim? I can't hear you.
Um, I had talked to the tour company back in, I can't remember, it was March or April. She said, we actually have like a good deal of only losing $600. Because a lot of times they only refund 50% of a tour. But they said because their tours were still going, it wasn't their fault. That they should be refunding 100%. That was the tour company's perspective.
And, and that, that's not incorrect in terms of they wanted to send our students in December. And that's when COVID cases were high and we were gonna go through three different countries and potentially having kids struggling with us.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah, I think I read that, I mean, but that was the rationale.
Definitely, I just, for the March trip, yes, the board postponed that and canceled that. Yes, that was mine.
Okay. We'll, we'll do a little bit of digging here and circle back for the next two minutes.
And I will, you know, continue to try to call the tour company and see if I can get ahold of somebody. You know, the other question I had relative to that was, when you read the insurance that we paid for, another $165 for nothing, but that's okay. Right, we paid for the insurance. And in there, in the policy, it says, you eat the $95 deposit. And non-refundable costs. Well, that could have been the whole trip. So, you know, although we paid for that insurance, when I read the contract, it was like, wow. They could write their own ticket as far as what non-refundable expenses they could get. Which, you know, high tech's 2020, right? Next time I plan something like this, I'll be sure to redefine it a little bit closer. That was just one other observation.
You know, my, Kim is posted if you make as you had, like, lack thereof.
So I'm gonna give them a rash.
There you go. There you go. Well, thank you very much.
Sorry again.
Is there any additional board conversation? I do need to announce there was an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personnel issue. And I would just like a brief executive, like, very brief, after the discussion.
I think we have one more speaker in the audience.
Oh.
Thank you.
Good for you, Richard.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make a, a last point. And I just, pity banking on her equality. And I just wanted to mention that Esther and I have a big work of, big workload of students. We have between 100 to 160 students that are more students than some full-time teachers. And I want to thank you for us having the opportunity to get that last year. I want to make sure that we are very appreciative of that. But I also want to encourage you to treat us equally as the other employees in the school district who get paid for their travel time as their duty within their job description. And I appreciate that. I'll be, just to keep us in mind that we would like to have the same as all our employees. Thank you.
Thank you. And like I said, a brief executive session after to discuss potential education. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, everyone. Do you want to just go in here? Yeah, you can just briefly go in here.